We're getting anxious to get them out of the garage.
You have any presentations tonight, Mayor?
Sure do.
You do?
Fire rescue.
What? Fire rescue, huh? Okay.
So I don't see Steve here, so I'm gonna have to go try to figure out what's going on with his, uh, with his computer in the other room because we had him set up and ready to go, so I'm gonna go check on.
Well, don't be, don't take off too soon. Alright, it's, uh, 6:45, I'm gonna call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for, uh, March 15th, Tiffin City Council to order. Does that, anyone have anything for, uh, Committee of the Whole? Do we have any, Mayor?
Yes, just, uh, requesting suspension of, uh, Resolution 21-7. On the reason for that, the deadline, uh, for us to submit, uh, to ODOT is the first week of April. Uh, and we need to have that passed this evening so that we can, uh, have things in place in time to, uh, submit the paperwork and payment to ODOT.
Okay, uh, who signed that?
It'd be Ken.
Did you sign it, Ben?
It'd be Ken.
Ken?
Didn't it Ken?
No, would've been Steve.
Steve, okay.
Yeah, yes, I did sign it, but I think Steve signed it also. There's a little confusion on my part there, but.
Steve did sign it.
Okay.
Alright. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, is that how it usually looks at?
Yep.
Okay, now, you need to mute, you know, click right down there with this side, okay?
Here, Steve.
Are we untabling anything tonight?
No, I don't think so. We're not gonna, we're not gonna table anything tonight, are we? We have to.
No, no, there's, there's nothing to, uh, to table, um, and if I could add.
Untable, no.
Oh, untable, yeah, there's nothing to take off, uh, the table, um, at this point, let's see.
We just have the three zoning ordinances.
Yeah, it's just those that we are, um, having to join public hearings, so we won't take those off the table until the first meeting in April.
This might be a dumb question, but we're gonna deal with each one of the ordinances in the public, um, uh, hearing separately, correct?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate so that everyone understands the subject matter of, of each, uh, segment of the joint public hearing, yes. And, and Mr. President, if I can, to give you a little more explanation on, um, the Resolution 21-7, you may recall, Council, that you approved, uh, an ordinance back in December for this, uh, urban paving project 20-135. And, um, we submitted that and been working with ODOT, who, uh, they're, uh, running the project, we're working with them and adding on, as you know, certain, um, streets within the city. Just, uh, in the last week, they did, uh, give us, um, more detail about the procedure that we're supposed to follow. And in particular, they wanted a resolution that, uh, does what you see here. They confirm certain aspects of the, uh, of the project and our participation, our financial participation in the project. And, uh, so even though we generally did that before, um, and that was accepted and necessary for the ODOT project, they also want this in addition, and they just gave it to us, uh, last week. Um, there is a deadline coming up, there's a reference in a, um, in the, um, ordinance about, or resolution about a deadline. We just learned that deadline here, uh, in the last week, and that is April 9th. Um, so, you know, it gives you a little bit of background, you know, we weren't waiting, sitting on information from ODOT, uh, we reacted as soon as we received it.
Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. Anything else?
Councilman Leffler. Councilman Leffler. Uh, thank, thank you, uh, I'd like to schedule a couple of, uh, street sidewalk and sewer commi- committee meetings, if I may.
Sure.
Zach, I don't know if this works good for you, you said Wednesday and Thursdays were great for you. I'd like to schedule a 2:00 PM meeting on March the 17th, if we can. Does that fit in everybody's schedule? Dawn, Ken?
It's in the heart of my anniversary, but I think I can do it.
We'll, we'll bring cake for you.
I don't need cake.
Well, well, that's in the heart of my anniversary, which is the first day of spring on the 20th, so, can you make that two cakes?
Okay. We can do that. This is gonna be a Zoom meeting, so you can pretend you're eating cake.
Well, it's my birthday, so what are you all buying me?
Green beer. Um, okay, if, uh, if there's no objections, I would like to schedule a street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting, 2:00 PM, Wednesday, March 17th. Purpose of the meeting is the re- mayor's request for legislation 21-5, traffic warrant studies. Uh, who will be the administrator for the Zoom meeting?
Oh, that'd be me.
Okay, are you fine with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
I've, I've, uh, I've already contacted Matt, and that day will work for him as well. We also need to schedule a street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting that I would like to be, uh, live onsite for alley vacation, vacations, petitions 104, 105, 106, and 107. And, uh, if we could schedule those for the 30th of March.
3:30, hang on, 3:30.
What, what time are you available, Zach? You're muted.
Muted.
I'm off those days.
Are you?
Yeah, you tell me when.
Uh, Matt, can you, um, Mayor, can you bring Matt Watson in for a few moments?
Sure.
Okay.
You said Tuesday, the 30th, right?
Correct.
So you're okay, Zach?
Uh, it's a, it's a Tuesday, it'd have to be after 4:00.
Okay.
So if Monday was there Thursday, I'm fine, but some of those other days, it'd have to be at certain times.
Now, we got plenty of daylight. Are you okay with that, Dawn?
That's fine with me, I was just worried about Zach because he said Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, Ken, are you good?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, uh, Matt, we've scheduled a meeting on, uh, for the traffic warrants, uh, studies on Wednesday, March 17th, 2:00 PM. I believe we were good with that, weren't we?
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
We're scheduling a, uh, the alley vacation petitions, the four petitions for April the 30th. Is that, will that work with you?
You said it's March 30th. Not April, March.
Yes.
And what time?
Yeah, March, March 30th, anytime after 1 o'clock's time for me.
Okay, uh, 4:15 work for everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, schedule a street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting at 4:15 PM on Tuesday, March the 30th. Purpose of the meeting is to discuss onsite, uh, petitions number 104, 105, 106, and 107. And we will start out meeting on Elwood Street, just off of, uh, West Davis, East Davis.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, uh, do you care if I just leave Matt in here since he'll be on anyways and about?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have any objections if I go ahead and bring the Planning Commission members in now?
None at all.
You don't have to fumble around with that, okay?
That's fine.
I'm going to go ahead and bring them in because I know our public hearing's right after roll call, isn't it? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I will bring the Planning Commission members in now also so that they're in here.
Okay.
I have a dumb question, Mayor, you're the Chair of the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Tiffin City Council for March 15th, 2021. Uh, this evening will be led in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Yana Toono.
Let us pray. Dear God, stir us to listen to the needs of humankind and do our part to assist those in need. Teach us to meet each day gratefully and to realize that we create more happiness by serving others and by serving ourselves. In his name we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yana Toono. I'd now like to, um, ask, uh, Clerk of Council Anne Forrest to please call the roll.
Councilwoman Yana Toono. Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Leffler.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Councilman Perry.
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of, uh, City Council were present for the meeting. At this point, I, I'd like to announce, um, open the po- a, a, um, public hearing, a joint public hearing between Tiffin City Council and the Planning Commission. This evening we'll be discussing, uh, three city ordinances, ordinance 21-15, 21-16, and 21-17. At this time, I'd like to ask the Mayor, uh, to call, call the roll for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, as Chair of the Planning Commission, I call the meeting to order. Matt Watson, if you would, please, uh, roll call attendance for us quick.
Rod Morrison.
Present.
John Bing. Bryce Riggs.
Here.
Bob Williams.
Present.
Vicky Wilkins.
Present.
Dale Thornton.
Present.
Mayor Motts.
Present. Mr. President, we have six of the seven Planning Commission members here, so we have a forum.
Thank you. Uh, the first order of business will be to discuss ordinance 21-15. This is an ordinance which is amending the, uh, zoning map of the city of Tiffin to change the zoning classification of five parcels of land on South Sandusky Street owned by R Investments LLC in the 4th Ward of the city of Tiffin. Anyone from the, uh, attending public who wishes to address, um, the, um, the Council and the Planning Commission can do so by being recognized by, um, by the Mayor, if I said that correctly. If you wanna, if you wanna go through the procedures, Mayor?
Sure. Uh, for any members of the public who wish now to speak to this joint hearing of the Planning Commission and City Council, uh, there is a feature on your computer screen that says raise hand. You will click that, and we will then allow you into the room for you to, uh, either ask questions or speak to, uh, members of City Council. And this first part is for questions or comments regarding the, uh, the property on South Sandusky Street. So I know we've got a couple this evening, we'll get through them all, but if anyone now from the public would like to speak, uh, to City Council or ask any questions about the, the changes to the property on South Sandusky, please use the raise hand feature. I am not seeing any hands, Mr. President, uh, we do have quite a few people in there, but I do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, does anyone from the Planning Commission have a comment, or from City Council? Comment, question? Okay. Well, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the, uh, the second ordinance, which is ordinance 21-16. Uh, this ordinance amends the zoning map of the city of Tiffin to change the zoning classification of two parcels of land on St. Francis Avenue owned by the Sisters of St. Francis of Tiffin, Ohio, in the 4th Ward of the city of Tiffin.
Okay, the same thing, uh, is with South Sandusky Street, if there are any members of the public who have a question, a comment, concern, et cetera, uh, please use the raise hand function, this is for the, uh, uh, how many acres was it, Mr. President, for the Sisters of St. Francis property?
I'm not sure about on, on this one, the, the second one was 200 and some, 240 acres, but I'm not sure what the acreage is on this.
If anyone has any questions, comments, concerns from the public, please click the, uh, raise hand button. Uh, depending on your computer, it's either located at the bottom or at the top on the toolbar. And you would click that now if you wish to speak. Alright, Mr. President, I do have a hand, I'm going to let them in. Alright, and the, the name comes up as Anne Zablaki Huth. Uh, Anne, you'll have to just, I'm, I'm assuming this is Anne, you'll have to unmute yourself, uh, and then you may ask your question to Council President Fote.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I guess I had did talk to, uh, Anne Forrest today on the phone. The only thing that I had was a couple of concerns, I didn't even know they were going to be doing this until I saw it in the newspaper because there was no note letters to us, and this butts our property on two sides. And the other thing is, is that they sent a, um, certified letter, which we never signed, and the Jan Kachera or my son in this land butts up on, uh, to us, so this was news to me. So, um, I guess my question is, how is this going to affect our 15 acres that's kind of sandwiched in now?
Who would you like to answer that, Mr. President?
Well, I'm gonna ask, um, I'm gonna ask the law director if he wants to, uh, weigh in on that.
Yeah, if I, I can answer, um, this particular ordinance re-zones, uh, property that's currently within the city of Tiffin. And it changes the zoning to R4A, which is a newer, um, zoning classification. Um, so it does not, and it does not involve, um, the property that is adjacent to your property. Um, the next ordinance, uh, zones the property that is in the process of being annexed to the city. This ordinance only applies to the property that the sisters own that's within the city of Tiffin.
Okay, so the 214 acres does run out where we're at, and it's not, not in the city of Tiffin.
Yeah, that's right, the 200 plus acres, that is the area that is currently in Clinton Township that, um, portion of that then, um, is adjoy- adjacent to your property. And that's the next ordinance, it's not this ordinance.
Okay.
21-16, it's the next one, 21-17.
Okay.
Anne, do you, uh, have anything else before we, uh, swap you out for someone else?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Yep, thank you for joining us. Alright, any other members of the public, uh, wishing to ask questions or address Council about this topic, uh, please use the raise hand button, uh, so that we can bring you in. I do not see any other hands, Mr. President, oh wait, one just did go up. Uh, they'll have to identify themselves because it just comes up motor, M-O-T-O-R.
You'll have to unmute yourself, too.
Yeah, they'll have to unmute themselves, and if they could, uh, state their name for our minutes that we require, uh, state your name, please. Um, whomever that was with, with their hand up, if you could, please, uh, you, you should be able to speak now.
My name is Bob Hemlinger. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I live on, uh, 505 South Sandusky Street. It's gonna be basically my neighbor. I was wondering about property values and the street is busy enough, how much traffic, how much more traffic is that gonna ensue, do you reckon?
You, you say you live on South Sandusky Street? Bob?
Yes, sir.
I believe he's probably referring to 21-15.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I, I don't think, uh, can't, I can't, I can't really answer it, um. I think, uh, what's gonna happen with the property is not really gonna increase the traffic, it's not, it's gonna be more residential, so I don't think that's, is, is, it's gonna have a great impact on traffic in the area. Is, is, is Matt, Matt, do you have any comments about that?
Yeah, all that I'm aware of is that, uh, the applicant is looking to rezone the property from, uh, our three single-family residential to an R4 multi-family residential, um, and beyond that, I don't know if the, the applicant's on here, if they wanna speak further about the plans of the project, but, um, that's, that's all I'm aware of with this ordinance, is just simply a zoning change request to, uh, change the current zoning classification from single-family residential to multi-family residential. And any plans that would come for the development, the engineer's office would review, um, in regards to, uh, access drives and traffic flow pa- patterns and, and, and safety from everything from that standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else, Mayor?
Uh, is there anyone else who, uh, wishes to speak, uh, on the second item on our list this evening for this public hearing, raise your hand, please? I do not see any additional hands on that topic, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move ahead to the, uh, to the next item on the, uh, on the meeting notice, and that is, uh, a discussion of ordinance, uh, city ordinance 21-17. Uh, this ordinance zones approximately 214.031 acres of land owned by the Sisters of St. Francis of Tiffin, Ohio, in the 4th Ward of the city of Tiffin, as zoned, uh, R4A, multiple-family residential agricultural district, compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances. Anyone wishing to speak to, uh, Planning Commission and the City Council can do so, uh, by being recognized by, uh, by the Mayor.
Alright, and for the third and final topic, uh, if you wish to address City Council, uh, please raise your hand at this time. Alright, Mr. President, I have, uh, one hand so far. Pat Damonti.
Pat.
And then Pat, you'll just have to, uh, unmute yourself. And then, Pat, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Mayor Montz and President Vogt and members of the committee or the council. We live across the street from the part of the property by the adjacent, excuse me, to Saint Francis on two thirty one. And has this property already been annexed, and you're just changing the zoning platform, or is this? We're not sure. We did not realize it was annexed already if if it has been. So our question is, has that property already been annexed?
Law Director?
Pat, the the answer is no, it is not. It's in the middle of the process for annexation. And the process is that the the petitioner, Sisters of Saint Francis, filed a petition for annexation with Seneca County Commissioners. That was approved, and then it was submitted to City Council per the state law, and it now sits for sixty days, after which council will entertain a an ordinance to accept that annexation, and that won't happen until the second meeting in April, which will be council's meeting on April nineteenth. In the meantime, though, while that is waiting, as required by Ohio law, council may entertain an ordinance to zone the property so that when it is approved, if it's approved for annexation, it will also be zoned at that same meeting, the appropriate zoning classification. And so that's what we're following right now, is the procedure to zone the property. That is necessary because without that, then the zoning of the of the property being annexed does not fall under the jurisdiction of the city of Tiffin. And it's the policy of the city of Tiffin that any property that is annexed that's within its jurisdiction should fall within the these cities jurisdiction of overseeing the the zoning laws and the development of that property, if any. So that's procedurally what we are doing, Pat. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Howard. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thanks, Pat and Tim. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to to speak? Let me get Pat out of here. I gotta find her in the list. All right, I have a couple more hands, Mr. President.
Okay.
The next one just says guest. So they're on their way in. Whomever that is, if you could, please identify yourself for the minutes. You'll have to unmute yourself as well.
Hi, I'm Leslie Pungian, and I live at Deer Ridge. So my property abuts Sisters of Saint Francis field that is up for rezoning, and I just had a couple of questions about it. First of all, I was just wondering why the field is being rezoned, if someone could elaborate on that?
Matt, do you wanna? Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, it kind of follows what Brent just said. The city of Tiffin received a petition for annexation, and as property is annexed into the city, it is the city's obligation to assign a zoning classification per the city of difference zoning ordinances so that the all property within the city of Tiffin falls within a city of Tiffin zoning classification. So that is the reason why there is being proposed to be rezoned from the current Clinton Township zoning that it is to a city of Tiffin zoning classification.
So could it stay zoned agricultural?
Would you like me to answer that, Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
So when a property is being proposed for zoning within the city of Tiffin, we try to find our best fit zoning classification that fits the current use of the property. We do not necessarily have a straight agricultural zone district within our city of Tiffin zoning classifications. So recently, the city of Tiffin created what is known as R four A, multi-family agricultural. Currently, the property that's within the city of Tiffin of the Sisters of Saint Francis is owned R four multi-family. But but they currently have some agricultural-based uses that are happening on that property. So we created a new zoning district, the R four A, so that the property that they have in the city plus the property that was being proposed for annexation all best fits the current uses of their property. So this zoning classification, the R four A, allows for many uses, the uses of the R four, which is already currently, which the section in the city is already currently zoned, with the addition of a couple items that are agricultural-based. So the agricultural uses that are allowed within the R four A are restricted to certain size properties. We also, when we created this R four A, we we tried to protect, you know, property owners, whether they're in the city or adjacent property owners that may be in the county. And and the way we did that was we quantified the number of animals that are allowed in our agricultural-based multi-family district. We also established setbacks. So we did establish a setback from how far an agricultural use could be from the property line and also from a house from that use. So the zoning class, basically, to go back and answer your question, the zoning classification that we established in the city of Tiffin is the most nearest use to what would be proposed for the property and how it is currently being used.
Okay, so if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, there is not an agricultural zoning for the city of Tiffin?
That is correct. The closest zoning is a combination of multi-family plus agricultural.
Okay. I also had a question. I had heard that there is a conservatorship over many of the acres of that field. Do you know anything about that?
Being that that is a private property, I would not want to speak on that. But I think somebody from the Sisters of Saint Francis, if they would like to, they probably could.
Law Director, you have anything you want to add, or?
Yeah, I can. I can state that it is a public record in the recorder's office for the the property owned by the Sisters of Saint Francis that this involves, it's a conservation easement. And so it it limits, restricts the development of that property. And I know the sisters could speak much more to this, but it is in very much keeping with the mission of the Sisters of Saint Francis. And they're even looking to Saint Francis himself and and his ministry. I, again, the sisters can explain this in much more detail, but I think in part the purpose is to conserve that property to keep it a viable farming property for that that part of of the county. And so there is a conservation easement, and by its terms, it does restrict the development of that property and what can be done. I don't have that document in front of me, but you can read in a lot of detail that the restrictions that are placed on the property.
Is there a way to get a copy of that?
Sure, it's in the recorder's office. It's, which is a public record.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you for joining us. Is there, I do have another hand, Mr. President, so let me get Leslie out, and this one just says Ron, so we'll need Ron to identify himself. Ron, you should be in. You'll just have to unmute yourself.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ron Frank, and I live in the Deer Ridge subdivision. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Pretty much same question that Leslie had, very concerned about, you know, I've been in this subdivision since two thousand and two, one of the original people who bought a house in this subdivision. We do have the Saint Francis land right behind us looking to the west, and we truly don't want to lose our sunset to the west with who knows what could go in there with this wide-open zone. Now, I think Mr. Howard just answered a lot of my questions with the easement that he said that was on his property. But I'm not sure what still right that would that gives us. I mean, not not being, you know, in tune with all the law. What do you want to say? All the definitions and things like this. What does that give me as far as not allowing industry or some kind of a big building or an apartment complex going up back behind us on Saint Francis ground?
Law Director, do you want to answer that?
Well, just a couple of comments. One is the conservation easement is is not, it's something that the sisters subjected the property to themselves. And so other property owners are not parties to that easement. And so may may or may not have any rights to enforce any provision in that easement. And so that's that's one point. The other is, is that the property, once it's annexed and it's zoned, then it would be subject to any development that the property owner would want within that zoning classification. That's just the fact of the matter anywhere you are within the city. So any property that you don't own, you don't have a right to dictate what goes on that property. You are given notice, like what we're doing here, so that you can make comment about your wishes as an adjoining property owner, even if you're outside the city. As you know, you know, Ron's property is outside the city. But yet, we have certain charter rules about notice to adjoining property owners. And so we strictly followed those and didn't suggest that, hey, just because you're outside the city, you shouldn't have a right to to notice. We gave you that right, and that's what then we're having this hearing so that you can give your comment. I will say, though, that I'm not aware of any plans that the sisters have to change the use of their property. And they can speak to that if they would like, but I'm not aware of any plans that they're going to change what they're doing. They are just allowing this property to be annexed to the city. And when property is annexed, as Matt and I've described, it is the policy of the city to assign the property a zoning classification so that we have the jurisdiction over that property in terms of any regulation related to zoning, and it's not then regulated, continue to be regulated by a subdivision that is, it's it's used to be, but not, wouldn't be currently a part of. So that's why we are assigning it the most appropriate zoning classification that the city has.
I don't know if I'm still muted in my live.
You're live.
Okay, just curious, why an ordinance twenty one sixteen and a separate twenty one seventeen?
Yeah, I can answer that, too, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Because they are different subject matters. And they kind of stand alone. The twenty one sixteen deals with property that's already within the city of Tiffin. Twenty one seventeen deals with property that's outside the city of Tiffin currently, and would be assigning a a new zoning classification for it. So those are slightly different, even though it's the same property owner, but they really have different subject matters because of procedurally, one is still outside the city, and and it's the initial zoning, not a rezoning.
Thank you. Understand. The only thing, I guess, just a very last comment that I would have is, you know, since this property does go across quite a few of our lots here in the Deer Ridge subdivision, I know that you're saying with the the easement that hopefully would put our mind at ease, that anything would be run just like this same process. We would have a say if something were to be built or some type of a, because when I look at the list of what this, was it R four A includes, I mean, it's it's very, very wide open with you know, dormitories, boarding houses, and and so on and so forth. So I guess my my concern is, yeah, just we just gonna have to have a say down the road if something wants to be built behind us. And you're saying that that would happen with this type of a format. And unfortunately, the city doesn't have anything that could be agricultural. Or I would probably ask if there's any part of this parcel, especially the area that goes out to two twenty four and then back across the subdivision, and it joins to the subdivision properties. You know, if some of that could still be agricultural, but I guess you're saying that that's not even a possibility.
Law Director?
Yeah, the the entire parcel need to be, needs to be assigned a a zoning classification. And the R four A does have agricultural uses. And I understand that those are, those uses are compatible with the current use that the property is, that Sisters of Saint Francis are using the property for. So it would be the most appropriate classification. Also, just to clarify, Ron, if the property then is zoned R four A, and say there is a future development, and again, you know, this is hypothetical, but I just want to make sure, answer your question, make sure it's clear. If the, if a property owner would come to the city to seek a zoning permit, and their intended use is one of the permitted uses under the zoning classification, they would administratively receive the zoning permit from the the city without any sort of further hearing open to the public because they are complying with that code section, and so they don't need, there doesn't need to be a a new public hearing. Again, I'm not aware of any plans the sisters have to develop this property. And my understanding is that they are interested in having it to be continued to be agricultural use. As you know, you know, they've developed that property consistent with the agricultural use. They are, over the years, have demonstrated a great stewardship for that property. And any any change, especially any significant change, but really any change would be a complete departure from the sisters' historical stewardship and the mission of that we've seen in our community and have appreciated over the years with the Sisters of Saint Francis.
All right, thank you, Brent, and I guess we'll just have to hope that the sisters stick with that philosophy.
Cosman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to speak with a few Deer Ridge residents over the course of the past week and got to speak with Law Director Howard and our city engineer. And I I wonder if where some of the concern is coming from is the new zoning classification. Now, Matt, I know you sent a wonderful email explaining it. We know that the Sisters of Saint Francis already have such a terrific variety of activities on their campus with the with the nursing home, the dormitory-style living for the sisters, the agricultural uses, and the cemetery on the grounds. And I I think what some might be worried about is that those things with this classification, that's just putting it all under umbrella. I think they're worried that suddenly there'll be a cemetery in their backyard or or a new dormitory. And as Law Director Howard said, I, there does not appear to be any sort of plans for any sort of changes with with the property in question. Is that accurate, Mr. Watson?
Yeah, from everything that I've heard, there is no plans for any sort of development. This is just all part of the annexation process. And this was the best bit zoning classification within the side the city of Tiffin to assign to the property based upon the current use of Saint Francis's property.
Very good. Thank you, Matt.
I think the other thing too, anyone who's. Who's followed what the sisters have done out there. And I've had a couple of dealings with them. They're very, they're very reluctant to see. Any changes in that property. They're pretty much set on what they want to do with with the property, so. The likelihood that that property is ever going to change hands or. There's going to be any any change in uses, I I think is very, very, very small, so. I wouldn't be too worried about it. Mayor, Mayor Muntz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I agree. I've been in several of the conversations with 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 a number of the sisters out there and they've never. Given any indication they're planning any kind of a development, but I wanted quickly, I do have the the current zoning in front of me. And if you would, I would like to read some of the regulations for the current zoning because we had the discussion. That our zoning actually is going to restrict the use more than what currently is permitted in the A five zoning. Which is the general agricultural district. Some of the items permitted now on on it, if it does not change our agriculture, churches. Essential services, which is awfully liberal and broad. But some of the other things that are listed here is basically any building that's funded by by tax dollars. So it says includes but not limited to parks, playgrounds, libraries, schools, fire stations, community centers. Waste treatment, pumping and storage facilities, wastewater pumping facilities and sanitary landfills are all permitted on that site right now. A couple of other permitted uses or conditional uses are commercial airports. Cemeteries, house care or excuse me, horse care and riding operations. Private recreation facilities, including but not limited to fishing lakes, swimming pools, tennis courts, gun clubs. Recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, camping area, golf courses, excluding driving ranges. Mineral extraction operations, radio, television and other transmission towers. Tunnels, private schools and childcare nurseries. Telephone exchanges, substations or other similar public buildings. Billboards, private sanitary landfill and storage of construction equipment. So if you look at what our code is, I know at least myself. Our code is much more restrictive with our our R four A residential versus what's allowed there now. So I just want to kind of throw that out there to just, I'm not sure if everyone's quite aware of of. Just quite the things that can be done on this R four A site. As or excuse me, not the R four A site, but the current zoning classification that that is there now.
Yeah, good points, good points. Is there anyone else?
Well, you have Councilwoman Yana Toon. You have two hands up in the room, whatever you want to go to.
Councilwoman Yana Toon.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, maybe this would help ease everybody's mind. Do the sisters want annexed into the city of Tiffin for city services? Maybe that's where the concern is coming from. Not want to know why they're changing and annexing in. And so maybe that would help alleviate their fears a little bit if they knew why we're asking for an annexation.
I don't know. Does anybody have an answer for that? Matt, do you have an answer for that? They like us.
All right, you do have two hands up in the room, Mr. President. Would you like me to go to them?
Yes, go ahead.
Next you have, the name is listed as John Reinhardt.
Thank you very much. So kind of going with the other two people that brought up their concerns. I think that is, you know, our biggest concern here back is the the multifamily or the change and what it all entail. We do all appreciate what Saint Francis has done. I mean, not just with maintaining the property, but. You know, the different things that they offer that kids can go to and check out there. But I just wanted to bring up my concerns. Most of my questions have already been answered. But I guess, yeah, I think you guys kind of hit on it are, you know, the big concern is just, you know, what could come back there? What sparked this interest? Is it, you know, multifamily that they're going to build everywhere back here? Or is it the thought process that they want to be annexed into the city to have city services? So I understand that there's no ordinance for R four A. Or I'm sorry, there's no ordinance for our agriculture. And that's where you guys kind of lumped R four A and it sounds like you guys created that just because that's what they currently have is multi-residential. So, yeah, that's, you know, obviously, I think a lot of people's concerns back here and just. Appreciate the conversations that you had. It would be very interested to know what the restrictions that Saint Francis has put on the property over the years. Whatever, let it catch that term, cutting in and out. You know, what their easements or whatnot. It'd be kind of nice to know what those are, but obviously, that's homework for me.
Law Director, you want to you want to expound on that again?
Well, it's a very lengthy document. It's called a conservation easement. It's when a property owner. Wants to place certain restrictions for on their property. For, as the terminology is, to conserve it, to maintain certain uses for the future. And every document, every conservation easement has different language to it. It's a very lengthy document. I would have to look at it myself to be able to. Give you any of the detail of it, but it is a public record at the recorder's office. And you could see if you want to get a copy of that, you could see and take a look at at the document, see what restrictions there it contains.
Will do. And because once again, I think part of what could help everybody out is what those. Limitations are because those might help, that might eliminate some of the R four requirements that you guys are annexing in. And might help ease all of us our concerns. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Mr. President, next you have a hand up. It says guest. So they are on their way in and whoever guest is will please identify yourself. You have to unmute.
Hi, it's me again. My name's Leslie Pungian and I just had one question. Can I ask why it was annexed into the city and what the purpose of that is? Or being annexed in, I should say?
Well, that question was just asked and we're not, I don't, I don't know that we know the answer to that.
Okay, and one more question too. When I look at the auditor site, there's a lot more acres than included in the two hundred and fourteen that. Are owned by the Sisters of Saint Francis that have the address of zero two twenty four. And I'm just wondering why that is it because that land is somewhere else? Why that's not included?
They own land on the south side of two twenty four.
So is that what that is?
Law Director or or city engineer, do you guys know? I know they have they have land. I don't know if that's part of this or not.
Yeah, and I I can respond. Yeah, there is a property to the south of two twenty four. That the sisters own that is not included in the annexation. But, you know, I we should be real transparent and. I think the reasons for the Sisters, Saint Francis, they're cooperating with the city. There is potential development over on two thirty one. Just be honest, you know, we know that there's property that could be developed for. Services and for benefits of the community. And so the city is looking that that we can help the community improve. In in annexing property that would be adjacent eventually to that property. For our our community and the sisters are very helpful in doing that. You know, that property, I will be honest, is is a property that could be a school someday. Everybody in the community knows that that was acquired by the the school district. The plans are still uncertain, but it would benefit the entire community if a school is ever built on two thirty one. That the property is within the city of Tiffin. So it would have all the services of the city of Tiffin. And likewise, the sisters benefit from the services that the city can provide to their property. So that's a value that they have in asking for the annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, Mr. President, I've got a couple of more hands. I have Sarah Aldridge, I believe is Sister Sarah.
Okay. You have to unmute yourself, sister.
Okay, well, I appreciate the conversation tonight, but I would like to address some of the concerns from Leslie and Ron and John about the conservation easement. I think it was two thousand and seven, we put over three hundred acres of our land in a land conservation easement. Because we do value. Land for the purpose of agriculture, for the purpose of having woods and wetlands. For natural resources. And so our hope and goal was that when the Sisters of Saint Francis. Years and years from now are no longer here, that there would remain a green space. In the city of Tiffin and Seneca County. So that was one of our main goals in establishing the land conservation easement. Under that land conservation easement. The land has to stay for agricultural use. We cannot develop it in any way. If the land would ever be sold, the conservation easement stays with the land. So if it would ever be sold, whoever buys that has to abide by that conservation easement. So I just want to assure you. There are no plans for any type of development on that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where is she at on the list? Okay, Sister Sarah is on her way out and. I have Anne Zablaki who's frets on her way in. And Anne should be in, she'll have to unmute herself again.
Okay, my question now is really to Mr. Howard. Because you're talking about the sisters' land on two thirty one, which they don't own any on two thirty one, except a really small. Portion of woods that's in the Black Swamp Conservancy. The what runs down two thirty one is Redeemer Lutheran and ours. So I'm not sure what. Annexing the sisters in has anything to do with the school.
Go ahead, Law Director.
Yeah. See, those properties that you your property and the Redeemer Lutheran that are just to the north of the woods that the sisters own. Is outside the city and but they do have property that's on two thirty one. And so there's other adjacent property. But all of those properties that are adjacent. Possibly in the future, working with property owners, could become part of the city. And it could then allow for the property that the school owns to become part of the the city of Tiffin. There's no guarantee with any of that, but it creates that opportunity that the the city, I believe. Thinks that that will add value to our community if that possibility does arise. And we don't know whether it will or not because, you know, there's a separate school board that has to make their own determinations on how to use their property. But this is one step that could help assist that development if that would. Be determined to be the most appropriate use of the property.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to do last call for hands, Mr. President?
Yes, last call for hands.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Now is your chance to raise your hand, please. All right, I see no additional hands, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the members of the Planning Commission and all those who. Called in this evening for being a part of our discussion. We'll now adjourn the joint planning meeting between the City Council and the Planning Commission. Next item on our agenda are petitions.
Mr. President, we have a revised petition. It was originally number one oh three when presented on March first. It's now number one oh seven by Ned Bame. It is the the same, the revision corrected the petition number. And added the signatures of adjoining property owners confirming they have been advised of his intent to file the petition.
Okay, this revised petition will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee. We're out under minutes. Has has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting? Are there any additions, corrections or deletions? Seeing none without objection, the minutes will be approved as presented. Next, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gilligan.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law, Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report tonight. And I'd be glad to share it with the council and community. Our Materials and Equipment Committee meeting, we held a Zoom meeting on Wednesday, March the tenth to discuss mayor's request. Legislature legislation twenty one dash four, any other topics that may come up. Attending were councilperson Zach Perkins and Ken Jones, Mayor Muntz, Dale Thornton, Brent Howard. And Street Superintendent Brandon Burner. Meeting was called to order at four oh two. Mr. Burner explained the reason for his request to counsel was a purchase. Street salt for the twenty twenty two calendar year. Tiffin has purchased street salt in bulk from ODOT. In the past, as at a reasonable price. The pricing has been around seventy seventy four dollars a ton. In the past, but ODOT will announce their pricing. Normally, this takes place the third week in April. But with COVID nineteen, it could get delayed until the summer months. ODOT requires payment when they send out their bills, so we're addressing this situation now versus later. Law Director Howard asked if the ordinance needed to have an emergency clause to it. If the bid from ODOT comes in in the next several months, we should be able to follow our normal process. City Administrator Thornton stated that Tiffin in the past has purchased street salt on our own. But a minimum amount of tons had to be met. These minimums were in excess of Tiffin's needs. Councilman Perkins stated Mr. Burner had answered any questions he may had. As for public input on the matter, no one from the public joined us. Councilman Jones made a motion to ask the Law Director to prepare an ordinance for the purchase of street salt for the twenty twenty two calendar year. Councilman Perkins seconded the motion. There was no further discussion this time. Motion passed, vote of two to zero. Law Director Howard asked Mr. Bernard forward an old template he could use. Mr. Burner stated that would take place with no further business to discuss. Councilman person Perkins made a motion to adjourn. Meeting was adjourned at four fourteen. There's any questions, Zach and Ben and I'd be glad to answer them. If there's any questions, uh, Zach and Ben and I'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Councilman Jones? Thank you, Councilman Jones.
President, Mr. President.
Oh, Law Director.
Yeah, just on the subject, um, out of this, uh, committee meeting, um, I prepared ordinance twenty-one dash twenty for council's consideration. Introduction to this evening. After the meeting was held, um, the superintendent of the Public Works Department, Brandon Burner, learned that the, there is a deadline coming up with the, um, submitting the, uh, information to ODOT to participate in the program. And it is April the thirtieth. So there is an emergency clause on the ordinance. April thirtieth is the deadline, so you just need to keep in mind as you're reading that the ordinance at meetings, that there will be an emergency clause that you'll vote on so that we can meet that ODOT deadline of April thirtieth.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Mr. Howard. I noticed that too on the ordinance and I guess that would have come up sooner or later. So thank you for that explanation. Anyone else?
We're still, we're still okay on, uh, on passing that in April. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilman Jones? Recreation and public property, Councilman Perkins.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic development and downtown planning, Councilwoman Yonatuno.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to reports of the officers. It's Honored Mayor Aaron D. Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first off this evening, um, I have a proclamation to read. Uh, and this is a mayor's proclamation for the city of Tiffin, Ohio. And, uh, as I read this, I'm going to bring in, uh, our, our newest local celebrity, uh, state champion Brody Conley into the meeting. So Brody, you're about to join us. And this is a mayor's proclamation for the city of Tiffin, Ohio, and it states, whereas Tiffin's own Brody Conley, a junior at Colombian High School, has dedicated thousands of hours of mastering his craft on the wrestling mat, beginning at the age of four with the Tiffin Wrestling Club. And whereas Brody is the very definition of a student athlete, excelling in the classroom with a three point eight one six GPA, while enrolled in honors and advanced placement courses, a recent inductee to the Tiffin Columbian chapter of National Honor Society, as well as a two-time captain of the football team and a third-team All-Ohio Award winner at linebacker this past season. Whereas, under the tutelage of Tiffin Columbian and other coaching mentors, Travis Saylor, Eric Gibson, Chad Long, Eric Burnett, Tiffin University's Joey Simcoe, and most importantly, his father and assistant coach Columbian of Columbian Wrestling, Sean Conley. Brody is a three-time state qualifier on the mat, placing fourth in Division Two as a freshman, was projected state champion before last season's canceled tournament, and is committed as a member of the Classic twenty twenty-two to wrestle for the Cornell Big Red. And whereas Brody completed an astounding regular season during which he recorded a perfect forty-eight no record, captured championships in the Sandusky Bay Conference Districts and Sectionals, as well as earning forty-five pins, securing his one hundredth career win and etching his name into the state wrestling's record books, where he is currently second all time in consecutive pins. Whereas this past weekend, Brody's boundless enthusiasm and dedication to the sport of wrestling culminated in his capturing the Ohio State Athletic Association's Division Two Wrestling Championship in the one hundred and seventy-pound weight class, defeating previously unbeaten Dylan Newsome of Bishop Hartley by a seven to four decision. And whereas Brody is held in universally high regard by his teachers, coaches, and peers for this tireless work ethic, kind and friendly nature, and is a shining example of the incredible youth who call our great city home. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Aaron D. Montz, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby declare today, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to be Brody Conley Day in the city of Tiffin. And I encourage all residents to join in congratulating Brody on earning Tiffin Columbian's second state wrestling championship and first since two thousand fourteen. Done under my hand this fifteenth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one. Brody, I know you're on here, uh, please, by all means, unmute yourself and say hello to everyone, but, uh, congratulations. This is well deserved and, and we're going to get you a, a very nice official copy of this. Uh, it's a shame we couldn't have you here in person for it.
Uh, hi, thank you. I really appreciate all that you guys have done.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, would you mind bringing in, we have our athletic director, Mr. Hartzell, Coach Lutz, and then Columbians Principal, Mr. Trissler as well.
Yep, they are on their way in.
Proud of you, Bruiser. Well done, Brody.
Thank you.
Well, it's quite a list of accomplishments. Not only, uh, are you busting your tail, uh, in many different athletics, but, uh, your GPA of, of over three point eight, uh, National Honor Society, you've got quite the list of, of academic accomplishments as well as just athletics. It's something to be very proud of.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, Brody, you make us all proud. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yeah, I, uh, I remember hearing your name a lot during the football season. I, I have one question for you. What are you gonna do for an encore?
Um, yeah, uh, just plan on going back in the room the rest, uh, it's up until next year and, uh, doing what I did last year, um, stay driven and, uh, go catch some more balls.
Good. Well, I'm pretty sure that you're gonna be a success, whatever you do.
Mr. President, I wouldn't be surprised if he was literally lifting weights the entire time while he was waiting to be brought into the meeting.
Well, I don't know if Athletic Director Hartzell or Coach Lutz or Principal Trissler wished to say anything, but you are on here. If any of you'd like to speak, you'll just have to unmute yourselves.
Yeah, I, I would. Uh, this is Dan Hartzell, Athletic Director at Tiffin Columbian High School. And, uh, turn, turn my video on here. Um, it's been a, it's been an honor to, uh, have such a representative like Brody Conley to lead, uh, not only his peers, but also the younger kids to show them what it takes to be a state champion and the, the time and the effort that he's put into it. Having been there for two years now, I just see what a commitment he has made. Not only is he a sport of wrestling, but to everything that he puts his mind out to it. He is, he is a great representative of not only Tiffin Columbian High School, but of the city of Tiffin. And, uh, I think on top of everything that Ben hit on, he is a tremendous person on and off any playing field, uh, that he, the steps on. And he is the true epitome of a, a student athlete. And I think if you were to walk the halls of, of Tiffin Columbian, I don't think one person would have anything negative to say about Brody Conley, because I think he would give each kid the shirt off their back, off of his back and help them in any way he possibly could. We are very fortunate to have such a representative at, at Columbian High School. So, uh, I know Brody's on there. I'm very proud of him. We had a great welcome back last night for him. Um, and, uh, you know, to, to, uh, answer what he's gonna do next year, he's gonna win it all again. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I think I saw Forrest Trissler unmute. I don't know Forrest, if you were wanting to speak also. There he is.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, just wanna thank, uh, you Mayor Montz, uh, and, uh, Tiffin City Council for recognizing such a fine young man. Uh, Brody is a tremendous young man, a Cornell commit, just as solid as in the classroom as he is, uh, on the wrestling mat. And the same goes for him as a person and as a leader. Brody, very proud of you, uh, and, uh, keep up the good work. Keep being a great leader in, uh, in the halls, uh, in the classroom, uh, and on the football field, uh, and on the wrestling mats. And, uh, go tornadoes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Well, we appreciate you joining us, uh, this evening, Brody. It sounds like you're already a, a, a shoe-in at Cornell, so, uh, normally I would tell you, you should have just recorded this this evening, and, uh, that could have been your college admissions, uh, essay right there of all of the, the praise that we're throwing your way. But, uh, so what are you studying at Cornell?
Um, I haven't fully, uh, I mean, I, I haven't fully committed to what I'm gonna do yet, but I know I'm gonna be going into the medical field of some type, but, uh, not a full grasp on exactly what I'm gonna do yet.
You got time to sort that out?
Yeah.
I think Councilman Perry had, yes, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, congrats, Brody. It's awesome. It's been fun, uh, following you, um, throughout your career. It's always amazing, uh, I know after their big playoff win in football and, and again, when he won the championship, watching him do that backflip is one of the, one of my favorite things to watch. It's awesome. So, uh, yeah, just really congrats, man. Tiffin's proud of you and, and, uh, it's awesome, uh, all the successes that you've been having, man.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Gillig.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. One final comment, I did need to share this. I did make an error uh, in reporting some of my facts to Mayor Montz. Brody is in fact a three-time captain in football, which means he was elected by his teammates as a team captain as a freshman and sophomore, along with this year as a junior. And, uh, I was fortunate enough to coach Brody in eighth grade, and he was also elected captain then as well. Just a wonderful leader. He, he knows the kids that need a pat on the back, and he knows the kids that need a, a kick in the rear. And, um, you know, I'm, I make this joke, and I know his mom gets mad at me when I do. I call him the All-American, American, and I'm, I'm pretty sure he's going to be president someday. So just as an FYI for everyone.
Well, just don't forget about Tiffin, Brody, when you're president, okay?
I never will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brody, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, awesome.
All right, um, due to the fact that, uh, we're already much later than we normally are, I'm gonna cross a few items off of my, uh, mayor's reports. We do still have the fire chief here this evening to, uh, give us presentation. So, um, let's see, what can I cross off quick? So anyways, we know twenty twenty was an absolute terrible rotten year for most all of us. So with that, we're looking for ways here at the city that we can try to make things better and more enjoyable for our residents here in the community. And what can we do to just try to get things back to normal and, and get people interacting and, and, and having some fun once again in the community? So, uh, the last few weeks, we've been having internal discussions here, and we are pleased to announce tonight to the public that we are going to have the, the return of the city swimming pool and our city day camps and summer programs this year. Uh, but not only are we returning all of these programs and the pool, but we've decided that we're going to make them all free to the public. So the city swimming pool will be free to all residents, uh, in the city of Tiffin. Um, and then there will be a discounted rate to those who live outside the city for the pool. Uh, and we are going to go ahead and offer all of the city-run, uh, day camps and summer programs free of charge to our resident, or to everyone, uh, to be able to attend. Those even include some of our adult leagues, such as, uh, the Adult Kickball League and San Volleyball League and others. Just really, I, I think it's great that the Parks Department embraced this with Bryce and Mason and Todd. Just knowing that it's the right thing to do to the, to our residents. We had a rotten year last year, and this is just one way. Those may be struggling with financial matters or kids that were not able to have much of a summer last year because of the parks being closed for part of the year. We've had to cancel our camps. The pool never opened. Well, we're bringing it all back, and it's going to be free of charge to our residents. So, um, just feels really good to be able to make that announcement. I also would like to let everyone know that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we went live with the e-file system. So individuals can now file their tax returns electronically. You can head to the city's website and under the finance department, you can file your income taxes electronically versus making a trip down here or having to send them in the mail. We all know how slow the mail has been lately. I would like to let everyone know that bulk pickup this year for the city will be the week of May twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth uh, on your normal trash day. Again, that is bulk pickup week, May twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, on your regularly scheduled trash day. Same rules as all the previous years. Uh, we will have additional posts out later in social media and a press release that will go out. But same rules as it's always been for the last many years. I want to congratulate Webster Manufacturing on their acquisition of the Action Equipment Company. Uh, it's great to see a local business in Tiffin continue to expand and grow their operations. I would also like to congratulate Hoptometry Brewer, Hoptometry Brewery, uh, which will be going in Dr. Shiner's old office downtown. Hence the name Hoptometry. Uh, that will be Tiffin's third brewery. We have a long, uh, and storied history here in Tiffin with the brewery business. Having our third brewery kind of officially makes us a destination. Uh, so it's very exciting to have that open here in the city. I want to congratulate the Civil War Museum of Ohio on their ten-year anniversary. I know Rich, back when you were at Cydeck, uh, and I was my maybe first year on council. I know we all worked on grants and that Civil War, uh, museum, and it's nice to see that they're now celebrating a decade, uh, being open here in Tiffin, Ohio. Uh, and then, uh, very quickly, uh, financials continue to look good. This month, we are up approximately nineteen percent compared to where we were last year at this time, which is a positive of about sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, overall, on the year, we are up about five and a half percent, which is a total of about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So continuing to, uh, not, not look like a substantial improvement, but the fact that many communities are struggling right now in Ohio and the fact that we are ahead of where we were last year, which was ahead of the year before, uh, all points to very good signs here in the Tiffin community. Um, and then last but not least, uh, as, as council is probably aware, the, the newest stimulus package did pass Congress. Uh, we are still sorting through that. Uh, the city of Tiffin is expected to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of three million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funds. Uh, of course, like typically happens with the federal government, they pass the bill. However, none of the rules have been established. So we know we're receiving just under three and a half million dollars, but no one yet has any idea what the rules are. The only two rules that we have seen for certain is one, uh, if you accept money, you are not permitted to raise taxes, uh, for, I believe it's the next either four or five years, or excuse me, you're not permitted to lower taxes for the next four or five years. So if we take it, we're not allowed to lower taxes, um, for the next few years. And then the, uh, the other item is states, cities, et cetera, are not allowed to use the funds to shore up pension liabilities. Uh, we do not have a negative pension liability here in the city. Uh, but there are states and communities across this country that have very like, very large negative balances in those pension accounts. Uh, we are not one of them, uh, so that is not really of concern, uh, to us here locally. But we're going to find a way to use this money on the community and do as much good as we can with it. Whenever the federal government releases the, uh, information and the guidelines to it. Uh, the nice part is we will have until the end of two thousand twenty-four to expend the funds. So with that, are there any questions before I turn things over to our presentation this evening? Yes, Councilwoman Boyle?
Thanks. It's, it's really just more of a comment. I just wanted to, um, say how happy I am to hear about the programs and the pool, the programs returning in the pool, being back open this summer, and then on top of it, that it will be at no cost. I know that was really hard for a lot of us to make those decisions this past year, and it was even harder for the residents to, um, have that effect on them. So I'm really happy to hear that. That's the decision going forward and for this year, bring some positivity to the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm absolutely thrilled as well. Um, those were some gut-wrenching decisions last year that we had to make. Uh, we didn't want to, we weren't excited about them, but we are excited that we're going to be able to bring all of these back and offer them free of charge to our residents. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, I am going to, uh, turn things over this evening then to Rob Chapel, who is the interim chief of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. Uh, Rob, you should be on there. Uh, do you need screen sharing ability, I'm going to assume?
Yes, sir, I would, please.
Okay, uh, you should have it.
All right. Okay, I think we're all set. Okay, are you guys able to see my screen now?
No, I still see you and everyone else.
No.
There it goes.
Okay.
Now we've got it. There you go, chief.
Excellent. Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Council President, members of council, everybody else watching. Uh, it is a very distinct honor of mine and and still somewhat unexpected to uh be in this position this evening to be able to update the city council and uh, the the citizens that we serve on the the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division's activities in 2020 and uh kind of offer a little bit of guidance as to what we're looking forward to in this uh new year. I I think as a city, as a state and nation, we're all approaching 21 with uh quite a bit of optimism, and uh the fire department certainly shares in that as well. So with the presentation this evening, I I kind of broke it down into four groups. Some are shorter than others. Um, I I wanted to start with the history of our department. Um, but one of the things that we encounter frequently is that uh a lot of our citizens don't know that the fire department also provides EMS services. They don't know that we do building inspections. And uh, that there's still uh the the misconceptions out there that we're every weekend's a chili cook-off, and we spend our evenings playing checkers, and uh, we're actually up to chess now. We're, we're evolving a little bit. Um, the next I'd want to go through our mission values and goals. Uh, every successful organization always has those clearly defined, and uh, we we're certainly no exception. Uh, looking back on the the year of 2020 and the the different things that we did, uh, and the services that we provide, well, it would be the third step, and then finally, we'll wrap things up briefly as uh we we look towards the the end of this year and uh seeing what we're able to accomplish. So with no further ado, uh, way back on December 18th of 1893, uh, th- this very city council had uh after apparently a couple failed attempts, I I don't know how many, but several failed attempts. Uh, they decided, hey, let's try and create a full-time fire department. And uh, fortunately, uh, that nobody's ever looked back since. And so on February 1st, 1894, the city uh got to experience its first full-time paid uh fire department uh with William H. Bloom. He's one pictured uh seated in the center of the picture. He was the uh, the first chief, and the other uh members joining him in that photo is the entirety of that original fire department. Fast forward a few years to October 16th, 1917, uh, the vehicle that you see in the the top of the uh slide there uh was actually built right here in Tiffin by the old Tiffin Wagon Works. Uh, they, they produced uh numerous fire apparatuses, I understand. Uh, and we actually had this one that we were using with the Tiffin Fire Department specifically. Uh, it's referred to as a chemical hose truck, and while that doesn't have anything to do with really hazardous materials per se, uh, it was kind of the technology of the day that they would use uh kind of like a baking soda and vinegar uh type solution that would create a pressurized system, which would then uh force the water through the fire hoses, and that would be what would hopefully extinguish the fire. Um, the, the fire may still be going when it's done, or the fire could have been out very quickly, and there's still going to be much water coming from the system, but uh, it it's what they had available. Uh, when they added this vehicle, it was the last uh non-horse-drawn vehicle that the city had, and it marked an end of uh the the city having horses in its fire department. Um, in the bottom picture, there's a, an old ladder truck with tiller. Uh, if you see the gentleman uh at the very top of the picture coming out of the station, you can see he's holding a wheel there. That's called the tiller. That actually turns the back wheels, and it makes it easier to manipulate those trucks uh in more tight and narrow streets. So here's a pop quiz, and you can thank Councilman Gilligan for this, because I've learned of his uh love of trivia. So, any ideas why fire trucks have always, or at least traditionally been painted red? That's so historically, going back especially in the the olden days there, uh, red was considered a premium paint color, and communities or the volunteer departments or the the small fire companies uh would spend that extra money to make sure the trucks were painted red, so that everybody in surrounding communities be like, oh, wow, they've got the red fire trucks. That's cool. Um, nowadays, it, uh, a lot of them are red. There, there's other variations out there, but uh, to me, it can't beat the look for a red fire truck, and we're, we're very fortunate to have some uh great equipment that we get to work with here in town. So for for really uh about 70 years, the the original fire station number one had been located actually where Kathy Kaufman gets to work now most days, it appears, uh, right where our finance offices are located. Um, in 1940, with the completion of what was then deemed the new municipal building, uh, we, we moved into our current station one now uh on South Monroe Street. So we went from that to to this here. Uh, the station served us very well ever since. Our station two, this was the original station two, it was built in 1907. Uh, after years of service uh to the city, there was a lot of concerns with the the truck room floor stability and the other upkeep that was needed for the building, and the decision was made to raise that and then build what we now have out there today, uh, which was dedicated June 1st, 1966. Uh, there are a couple delays and a little bit of the finish work, uh, but we did move in July 27th of 1966 and have been operating, covering the north end of our city since that time. In 1997, uh, that is when uh the the ambulance service for the city, Tiffin EMS, was merged into the Tiffin Fire Department and created the actual Tiffin Fire Rescue Division. Uh, at that point, uh, the, some of the personnel from EMS came over and obtained their firefighter certifications, and we, we started offering uh ambulance service through our fire department and and have ever since. Uh, so we, we've got some really highly trained uh personnel, and and then we, I think we do a pretty good job of uh serving our citizens for that. So in discussing our our mission statement, uh, the mission of the Tiffa Fire Rescue Division is to protect life and property through dedicated and professional fire and EMS services. Very simple, very straightforward. Um, you know, I I like to think it all kind of boils down to, we want to be the absolute best at everything we do. And uh, we'll talk about some of the different roles and responsibilities that that we have as a fire department a little bit later in the presentation. Some of the things that we value uh is safety, uh, especially uh for those in our community and towards ourselves. Uh, this is a dangerous profession, and uh to be able to uh have a long and uh, you know, prosperous career, uh, it's important that we do those things that we, we can do to take care of ourselves and protect ourselves. Uh, honesty, uh, that is one of the the hallmarks of the the fire service. Uh, walking into so many of our buildings, doing our fire inspections, the uh, you know, we, we always ask you, hey, do you want somebody to walk around with us, or can we just, you know, go on our own? Everybody's like, oh, yeah, go ahead, just walk around. And it, we are just so entrusted uh to to do this job, and it's just, you know, not just here in Tiffin, but the fire service as a whole. Uh, and that's something that we always need to be mindful of. Uh, the pride in the services that we offer and the the work that we do. Uh, compassion, uh, we, we see many people on some of the worst days of their lives. Uh, generally, nobody calls 911 because they're having a good day, and while there's a a certain varying degree of emergencies uh to that person calling for our help at that point in time, they, they want our help. They don't know who else to call, and it it is humbling at times that they, they call and they, they want us to come and fix their problem. Uh, teamwork, of course, is essential to what we do. Uh, without being able to work well together, we can never accomplish so many of the different things that we uh are able to and the di- different tasks that we're charged with. And of course, education. Uh, the, the fire service at this point in time has more science uh being applied to it than what we've ever seen in the the history of the fire service. Uh, there, there's more agencies that are doing various studies on fire flow paths and uh the different carcinogens and everything that we are exposed to in the smoke. Um, so there's a lot of stuff for us to stay up to date on, uh, so that we're always able to perform at our best. And finally, our goals, uh, we, we will provide a high level of customer service. There, there's no exception to that. Uh, we will train to protect life, property, and the environment. We will strive to deliver innovative, fiscally responsible, of course, firefighting, fire prevention, and emergency medical services. Uh, we want to provide a a safe, rapid, and professional response to emergencies, and of course, again, show compassion for the victims of those emergencies. So it, as we start to look back through 2020, uh, I want to kind of cover some of the different things that we do here uh at Tiffin Fire. So of course, there's firefighting. It's one of the, you know, that it's in the name. It's what we do. Uh, emergency medical services, we've mentioned that now uh with the merger in 97. Technical rescue, uh, which can include things like hazardous material responses, rope rescues, water rescues, um, confined space, uh trench rescues, structural collapse. Uh, that, these are all different, very specific uh segments that fall under technical rescue that uh myself and several members on the department have gone and taken additional training in, so that we're ready to uh apply those skills as needed. We're very heavily involved with community risk reduction programs, and unfortunately, in 2020, we didn't get to do near as much of that as we are accustomed to doing and what we like to do. Uh, but we're hoping that uh for the, the later part of this year, we'll be able to get back to a little bit more normal levels of that. Uh, our commercial building inspections, we'll, we'll talk about some of the details behind that and the benefits of us doing those for our community. Building plan reviews and inspections, uh, this is kind of in uh conjunction with with our uh city zoning office and the engineer's office initially. And then finally, our alarm monitoring service, something that is very specific to the the city of Tiffin and how we approach uh those, that type of service for our uh businesses and residents. So first, we'll talk about the the firefighting portion. Uh, as of today, we have, counting myself, 32 personnel serving at the the firefighter two level. Uh, in terms of what the state of Ohio considers to be the highest level of training for firefighters, that would be that level firefighter two. Um, we have three crews that that work 24 hours on and then have 48 hours off. Uh, it's, it's their schedule. Uh, some of the fire department history, maybe would have been a good uh did you know thing here. Uh, the original firefighter uh schedule was actually 24 on, 24 off, and they did use a checkerboard for that. Um, the, you either run the red shift or the black shift, and that's how you kept track of your days when you were supposed to go to the, the fire station to work. Um, as, as call volumes increased and everything, most departments are are on this 24-on, 48-off schedule now. Uh, we obviously pre- offer fire protection for the entire city. Uh, we hold auto aid agreements with several of the surrounding townships. Uh, auto aid is used if uh a department, including ours, because we, we will actually uh request help from uh some of the volunteer departments that surround us, as well as the city of Fostoria. Um, so i- if there's a a known structure fire uh that is occurring in, we'll say, Clinton Township, as there was over the weekend, uh, the county dispatchers have on their computer screen and an immediate list of other departments that should be sent to that fire. Um, if it turns out that the, the fire is not as bad as what was reported and more manageable, then they can always cancel those resources and return them to their stations. But the benefit is having them on the way immediately and not waiting till you arrive at the scene and then calling for that help and and creating a much bigger delay. Um, and uh, as required by the Ohio Revised Code, we perform origin, origin and cause investigations for all fires. Uh, it's important that whenever fires do happen, that we, we do that due diligence. We look to see what caused it, uh, because the, the Ohio Fire Code is basically filled with uh examples of uh rules that we have today because of tragedies that occurred in the past. So by being able to see what causes fires and learn from that, it makes us better in our prevention efforts moving forward and can also affect how we uh view the code moving forward. So last year, uh, our personnel uh combined for nearly 1,700 hours of firefighter-related training. Uh, that's a, a pretty, pretty solid amount right there. Uh, responded on uh 630 non-EMS calls for service. We assisted neighboring departments on 47 occasions. Uh, that, that's number continues to grow from year to year as uh the, some of the volunteer departments that surround us uh may struggle with some staffing during the daytime. Uh, with the implementation of the auto aid program several years ago, it has uh automatically been sending us to more of their incidents moving forward too. Um, and and the last number there, average response time for all non, non-EMS calls was 3 minutes and 48 seconds. And that accounts for anything in the city, regardless of the ward. That accounts for county responses. So certainly, the, that number for in-town responses is even less. Um, and that is what makes a phenomenal difference in having just a small uh smoldering fire or what we call a room and contents fire, where it may just be a single room in a house that's involved in fire or having an entire house that is on fire. Uh, being able to respond quickly is the, the single greatest key to being successful in this. Uh, so we're, we're very fortunate to, to be able to boast, boast that number. Uh, some of those emergency responses that we have on the fire side of things, there were 46 different fires we responded to last year. Uh, 59 motor vehicle accidents, 37 hazardous conditions. That may be uh things like the power lines down or uh various uh, you know, uh unknown uh products on the roadways or or whatever. Uh, 28 gas leaks, normally like natural gas leaks. Um, um, so, yeah, we, we kind of respond to anything and everything there. We, we've got some uh multi-gas meters that help us to uh discern whether it's a, a suitable environment for people to remain in, or perhaps they should be uh evacuated out of their, their house until uh somebody can get there to actually service it. Uh, if, if you hadn't already heard, uh, the fire department, we, we get called a little bit for uh plumbing repair, furnace repair, uh roofing. Uh, it's, it's really whatever the citizens need from us. Uh, and again, i- if they don't know who else to call, they call the fire department, because they, they know that one way or another, we're going to do the things necessary to make it better for them. And uh, so, yeah, we, we've been in people's basements fixing, you know, busted pipes, trying to, to get that taken care of, and then helping clean water out of the basement as well. Um, it, it's just part of the, the job. Kind of a strange-looking chart all over the screen here. I apologize for that, but uh, looking at the calls by the month, um, you could kind of see January, February, March, we're off to pretty solid starts, and then uh with the pandemic really uh starting to take hold last spring and April, uh, there was a, a pretty drastic reduction in our uh call volumes right there, and it, uh, it was kind of weird, because the, nobody was really wanting to go to the hospital. Uh, there was a lot of um speculation that perhaps people were just simply afraid to go to the hospital for fear of contracting the virus while they were there. And uh, so we, we did see a decrease in our, our call volume year over year for the first time in many. We actually did not see much of an increase in our call volume. Um, but it, it may have had something to, to do with that. Uh, the later part of the year, numbers certainly got back to what is anymore our normal uh run volume. Uh, just since Sunday night, uh, or Sunday morning technically, at, at midnight, uh, we've responded on 31 calls for service. Um, so it's, it's been a busy uh 36 hours roughly for us. Uh, days of the week. Uh, Sundays are apparently a nice day to uh come to the fire station and not worry about being too busy. Uh, Thursdays and Fridays, though, uh might be a, a good day to find something else to do. Um, so it, it is funny how there, there are some days where you just feel like there's, you know, you're going to be busy no matter what, and then other days, you, you sit there and you, you wait for it to happen. But it, it always evens out in the end. Uh, every, every time you have a day where you might only do three or four calls, you'll end up with a day like they had yesterday and have 22. Um, it, it's just, uh, you never know. It's what, it's a, that sort of excitement that keeps us coming back each shift. Uh, one of the things that we've really been targeting through some of our pre- prevention efforts is the number of false alarms that we respond on. Uh, there was 217 of those that we went to in 2020. Uh, the college campuses are a, a, a pretty common uh scene for, for those to occur. Uh, but we do have a, a targeted program for that, that we, we were starting to see the benefits of. Uh, this year, we weren't able to deliver it as we had with the last couple, and the numbers have come right back up. Um, but, you know, unintentional, uh, also called nuisance alarms in, in some cases uh to continue to kind of be a, a burden for us, but uh, like I said, we do have a plan to work through. To continue to kind of be a burden for us, but like I said, we do have a plan to work through that. On the EMS side, 28 of our 32 personnel are certified as paramedics. We provide coverage for the the city, all of Clinton Township and the northern half of Eden Township through contracts. Those were just renewed. We do two-year contracts with those townships for for providing that service to them. In 2020, we responded to both of those townships, plus six additional townships in the county, plus the city of Fostoria. We we really are a resource throughout the county. We've been as far as Attica. And over to Fostoria, so that's about as wide as we can go in our county. For training and EMS, the crews combined for 1477 hours of continuing education. The state sets requirements for renewals every three years that we have to meet. And because of our in-house training efforts, we we've never struggled with that whatsoever. We responded on a total of 2,615 EMS incidents and transported 1,895 patients. And our average response time for those EMS calls was three minutes and 32 seconds. And with that, we're putting in most cases, a minimum of two, normally three paramedics on the scene. Paramedics is again, much like the firefighter two is the the pinnacle for firefighters in Ohio. That's what a paramedic is in the world of EMS in Ohio. Wait, so we're putting the absolute best trained, most highly qualified personnel. At your emergency scene in three and a half minutes. And that's really a testament to the the way our department's been up, been able to operate. When we look at the patient dispositions, basically the we we had a patient encounter. Did we either treat or transport them? And in 72% of cases, we would transport. And 26% we would treat and release. Those may be patients that had fallen at home and we assisted them back up and they they were uninjured and they were able to stay home. It may even be people that had a diabetic emergency that we treated at the scene, gave them medicine for that. And they showed improvement and they were well enough to sign off and not actually need to be transported. Saving them and insurance companies and Medicare, that money of that transport to the hospital. And then there are several, the 2% others would be the the situations with like a DOA patient where there there was. No transport that was done there. Our level of service, so as I mentioned with being paramedics, we're we're able to provide the highest level of care in EMS. By that, but it doesn't mean that every patient necessarily qualifies for that level of treatment. And so we'll we'll do a BLS or a basic life support. Which basically is checking your vital signs over, it's treating injuries that you may have. And providing a more palliative care during transport to the hospital. ALS level one is where we start doing things like cardiac monitoring, starting IVs. And doing more work at that higher level. And then ALS two is where you finally get into where we're placing breathing tubes in, we're we're doing. Defibrillations to basically reset the heart, possibly cardio versions to change the heart rhythm back to a better heart rhythm. Just a lot of different extra skills coming to play with that. And as each level of care increases, so does the amount of billing. Which the the city by ordinance follows and mirrors what Medicare reimbursement recommends. All right, so Councilwoman Ito, here's your chance to to be happy. Your award is getting the highest level of service or most frequent level of service that compared to all of them. You can see the breakdown. Well, so the third board, we we spoke about this morning, the department head meeting a little bit. With the Willow's facility opening up and now having a full year there. We did, I believe the number was 72 patients that that we transported from their facility last year. And in general, we we basically estimate that in a facility like that. For every bed that they have available, we'll probably have one transport. So so having that there and Tiffany Rehab across the street and sojourn. That that does keep us a little bit busy on that end of town. Plus Tiffany University, so you, there's a lot going on over in that third board. Certainly, we can't speak about EMS without discussing COVID. One of the first things I did when I became the acting chief last fall was to seek out and purchase. These UVC lights and the picture is an example of one of them in our medic one here at Station One. These UVC lights can be used to disinfect the ambulances. The they supposedly will kill the coronavirus within two minutes of exposure to that light source. So we we were using those very, very frequently. As we went through the fall and into the winter time, when we were really seeing the highest number of COVID exposures. We implemented stricter protocols requiring all personnel to wear N95 masks on every EMS response. As well as unless it was going to affect the patient's care, they also were to provide the the patient with an N95 mask. Thereby really attempting to restrict the amount of exposure that our personnel would receive. Unfortunately, even with those measures in place, we did have nine personnel. I would say probably starting middle of November, going through middle of December. That did test positive for the virus. Fortunately, they they all came through it okay and were able to return back to work. Couple of them were just outside of that two-week window that they had to quarantine. Everybody else seemed to to handle it pretty well, so. We were feel blessed about that. Looking at our actual patient encounters that we had. And again, the the colors aren't great on this, but the the yellowish line that starts out here at the top. First, that is the suspected cases and then the green line that kind of hangs out towards the bottom for most of it would be the confirmed known cases. That we saw for COVID. So you can definitely see the spike going into November, December and January, where it finally did start to reduce down. Really mirroring the the local state and even national rates that we were kind of seeing. Community Risk Reduction Programs, like I said, in 2020, we really didn't get too much of a chance to do this. This picture was actually taken at Calvert Elementary. We were able to get in there and and do this program. Now I'm wondering if that was Calvert. I may have misspoken there, I apologize. But the the schools were really good about employing social distancing and masking to allow us to to get in and and do the program. The our school program has been around for many, many years. It's aimed at kindergarten through fifth grade. And it's actually a progressive. Lesson plan that we use for each grade level. It starts off with teaching kids in the kindergarten level to crawl low under smoke, crawling next to a mirror with a. Painted smoke over top of that. All the way up to fourth and fifth grade where they actually have a Jeopardy system that they're able to buzz in and and compete to. Turn points in the in the game. It's a great program. I believe very firmly that is a significant reason why we do not have a youth fire setter program. Or a a problem, I should say, you fire set a problem in our community. Because we we really take a lot of the the wonderment away from fire that many kids tend to have. And by educating them about it at this age level, it seems to remedy that. Moving on to the college aged. Young adults. We we rolled out this program a couple of years ago. One of our firefighters, Nick Goshia and I put this together in 2017 and taught it for the first time. This was basically the first time living away from mom and dad. And now you have to cook your own food and try not to to cause fires. Program and and we discussed a lot of what causes the the nuisance alarms. Stressing, you know, hey, right underneath the smoke detector is not the best place to use hairspray in your hair. Vaping will certainly, we actually were just over it to you just a short while before this presentation. For somebody that was vaping in a hallway. The if you're going to cook popcorn, make sure it's three minutes and not 30 minutes. All the different little things that we've seen over the years from investigating the these incidents in the past, we kind of rolled into this program. But we also teach them about in the dorm living situations, when the fire alarm activates, that you really do need to to exit the building. But there there's too many rooms and not enough of us to be able to thoroughly clear a building if there really was a fire going on. So we stress the importance of abiding by those rules and the universities have done a great job of taking that message and reinforcing it. We were very much on the same page with that, which is great. As we. Move into an even more aged population. Another program that we had put together, Nick Goshia and myself, was our Fire and Fall Prevention for Seniors class. And Nick anymore is the one that he goes around and teaches this class in all of our senior apartment complexes. Throughout the city every year. And it's aimed, it's a one-hour program. The first half of it is aimed at fall prevention. We felt that there was a need for that because every year around 400 of our EMS calls that we respond on are related to falls. And so much of those may have been able to be prevented. But instead, a fall occurred, the person ends up being transported, now they're, you know, they may need to have surgery or, you know, some sort of long-term rehabilitation. And it's just a very difficult thing for them to go through. And then the second half focuses on fire prevention for them. So it's very well received. They they love having us come in and and visit. I think they're actually disappointed if I show up and it's not Nick anymore. I I take that kind of hard, but Nick's a great guy, does a perfect job for that program. Picture on the right is just a is a little girl scout troop that came in for a station visit. Probably one of the biggest things we miss. It was always such a pleasure having the the station doors open. And, you know, people would just be walking by on the street and if they had a kid with them, they were probably going to get an invitation in, no matter what mom and dad said. And they'd get the plastic firefighter hat and we'd maybe even get the a hose out and spray cones out on the front ramp. Just to, you know, try and create that, you know, goodwill with the public and and, you know, give some great memories for those kids to experience. So we really missed being able to do that this last year. We also threw a grant from Firehouse Subs a couple of years ago. We were able to buy an all-new electronic fire extinguisher training. Piece of equipment that you see in the picture there. Again, Nick Oshie, the guy does everything for us. He's great. But with this, it's nice because our our old system, you could only use outside and if the weather was good and. It it just was not ideal. With this, we can actually take it in, set it up in a person's office. And make it a very much more realistic training for them. And there's no mess to go with it, so it's pretty perfect. We put together a a home walkthrough program. That's available to any citizen in the city if they have questions or just want to have a a trained set of eyes. Look through their house for any sort of safety concerns that that may need to be addressed. We always offer that service as well. Moving to our building inspections, I broke this down into existing buildings and then new and renovated buildings. Oops, sorry about that. Oh boy, now I did it. Oh, I'm sorry. Here we go. This technology stuff, I get the hang of it yet. All right, back from that. So existing buildings, each year in the city, we inspect every commercial occupancy. That that's nearly 900 different buildings in our city that the crews go through and they they do the inspections for. There was 236 re-inspections done, so those were all issues that were identified as not meeting the fire code. And we had to go back and make sure that it was corrected. Part of the this program, the beauty of it is that by having these annual inspections, one, it's required by the code. But it also. Doesn't let things ever get too far out of hand. We always have a set of eyes on the property. And we're able to address things early on before it normally becomes too much of an issue. We did a few adoption and group home and daycare inspections. Anytime a person's looking to do foster care or adoption, they have to have a walkthrough done and the fire department provides that service. And by doing the commercial building inspections too, and it combines compliance with education. If we go to a person's place of work and we educate them on the dangers of, you know, having an overloaded electrical outlet. And they they learn that from us there, they take that information home with them and now we just protected another building as well. That may not even be in the city, but we're still protecting them. And it's just great training for the crews, the building familiarization. You know, imagine walking into Walmart with your eyes closed and having to find your way around there. It it would not be very easy and it's not any bit easier if it's full of smoke. But by becoming familiar with the layout and where different things are located in these buildings while doing the inspections. It it makes each one of our members a little bit wiser when approaching those situations. Anytime there's new building plans or renovations of buildings being done. Before their zoning permit is issued by the city, the fire department does the the plan review for that. And we will put together a list of recommendations or requirements that we may have for that property to be addressed. Depending on the extent of the the project and what else going into it, if it's a restaurant. There may be the kitchen hood system that we have to do a couple of different inspections with. France Hall over at Heidelberg, we recently wrapped that project up with Thomas Mark with Construction. There was sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems, all the egress lighting and stuff. Just a lot of different inspections to go into that, just to get one building actually crossed off the list as being complete and ready for occupancy. And the fire department signing off on that project is one of the things that helps get them that certificate of occupancy that they they need. We're certainly here to aid as in a consultation level with businesses as they're looking to open up and. Consider developing in the area. We had been doing that for a while and kind of started to get a little bit away from it, but I think it's important that. If there are questions that the fire department can answer that we offer to to do that. It's listed here as 80 activity inspections. Those would be all the different inspections along the way from a plan review to a hood system test or sprinkler test, etc. Our technical rescue information. This is the again, the the more specialized training the the personnel can seek out. This was actually done just a few weeks ago over at the Willow's facility. They were nice enough to let us use the retention pond. And we all got quite the education very quickly of, wow, this really is deep. We we never imagined it would be quite as deep as it was, but. It ended up providing some outstanding training for us. Combining both rope rescue training is kind of the the must-have to be successful in any other. Technical rescue training discipline that you would look into. You can see in the picture, the rest are coming in from the left. It's a, we call it a rescue alive sled. That they're able to move safely across a layer of ice and even if that ice was to break away. The rescuer was is still able to stay on that device and and not become a victim themselves. Auto extrication is a big one. John Swalding and Tony has been a phenomenal partner for us to work with for for many years. We've actually got some more training coming up at the end of this month that they're going to be helping us out yet again. We call them up and say, hey, we we've got some new toys. We want to cut up some cars. And they are nothing but accommodating and getting those cars set up however we want them, whether it's on their wheels or on the roof. They they will make it happen, so they're they're a great resource that we have here in our community for us. On two separate occasions now, I was contacted by Seneca Schools. They had a bus. Bus on to each occasion there that they were looking to dispose of. And cutting apart a school bus is very different than cutting apart a car. And to to be able to have that opportunity to. Demonstrate and have some of our our younger guys get to actually do the work of cutting up a school bus. It doesn't come around very often, and so we thank Seneca East for that. Our rope rescue does cover repelling off of the Hus Street Bridge on nice days. It also, you know, being able to to get the elevator shafts of different buildings and rappel. It also, you know, being able to to get the elevator shafts of different buildings and and rappel down. Underneath the the rescuer here is actually the elevator car itself with the top hatch. If we ever did need to approach an elevator in that manner, we we certainly are able to do it. We're well set up to to handle those. High angle rescue with this, we went out along the Sandusky River off of Riverside Drive. And we took our rescue mannequin and literally just threw it off the side of the road as far as we could. And then looked at the guys said, okay, go save it. And so they had to get it all packaged up and using a what we call hall system. They were able to retrieve the mannequin backup, the the embankment there. The the really cool thing about it, so to speak, and and why we train for these situations was that. Just last summer, there there was actually an auto accident that occurred just north of the city limits. And there there was a vehicle that the way it was positioned, we had to operate at a very similar angle to this. To be able to extricate the driver from that vehicle to transport him. So, you know, the the training is tried, you know, the the idea is to design it to mimic what could be real life. And that was one of those days for sure. The final component here was our alarm monitoring services. In in the last five and a half years that that I've been deputy chief and acting chief now. I've only ever spoken to one other fire chief that their city actually monitors alarms. So it it is something very unique to the city of Tiffin. A few years ago, the decision was made to start collecting revenue for that and actually charging for that alarm monitoring service. The the equipment that the city owns and maintains. If something were to happen and we needed to replace all of it, it would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar investment. So by collecting these these monitoring fees and the alarm permits that were started, I I believe in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, somewhere in that ballpark. That does generate revenue for the city that could be reinvested into that equipment if and assuredly when. Being an electronic device, when when that would need to be replaced. We also handle all the false burglar alarm response fines that the the PD responds to. We don't have any false alarm fines for the fire department. We don't want to do anything to discourage people for calling just in case there there really would be an issue. But burglar alarms are a little bit different animal that that they deal with there. Alright, so those are many of the ways that we apply our mission. You know, there there are certainly many others. We do car seat inspections and installations. We do have a juvenile fire setter program in place if the if even by court order. A juvenile would need to have some sort of intervention. They could actually come in and go through a screening program that we do right here in in our department with our trained personnel for that. CPR instruction, we used to go out quite a bit and teach a lot of classes in the community for that. We have five live fire instructors, which is a newer certificate certification, I should say, that the state offers. Which is needed on many of the live burn trainings that they've been held throughout the county. So again, being that regional resources right there for them. So our our mission has grown, but our stations have not. And that it is kind of one of the 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 problems. The fire trucks keep getting bigger because the work keeps getting getting more and more involved. The the pictures here, I I wasn't just following one of our guys around the station taking pictures of them. But you can kind of see the picture here on the left. That door leads into our kitchen. It's probably the most heavily used door in the fire station. And it's also probably the most common pinch point that we encounter. The center picture, Lieutenant Manchin there is standing between our first round ambulance medic one. Along with our old reserve engine three, as we call it now. To to get between there, you literally have to walk sideways and and sidestep between those two vehicles. Here he is now on the driver's side of that same engine, going back to our workstation little computer room that we have. The this engine has has been around for twenty years now. And it it is truly a reserve apparatus. It is seldom if ever used. Here he is now behind the engine. He he was kind of wondering why I had him doing all these things. If he ever sees this, he'll figure it out now. But you you can just see how tight it is with with that engine parked there. And one of the things that I I'm looking at doing and I've been consulting with the the other officers and members on the department. Is what value does this truck still offer to our department right now? It it's only ever driven on Saturdays when we do all of our reserve apparatus driving. And it it could certainly free up some more floor space for us. Like I said, the stations aren't getting any bigger, but maybe there's a possibility that we could remove some of the equipment. That and still not have any negative impact to the department. Because some of our newer vehicles can do everything this vehicle did for us in the past. The picture on the right, you can see this is our rescue boat that we received a grant for locally back in twenty seventeen. The crews have been over in Fostoria the night before this picture was taken. And that's our current setup that we have for drying gear. We just don't have room to put it anywhere else and but we don't have anywhere else to put the boat. And you can kind of see the domino effect that that ensues. This is the the wall on the opposite side of the station where all of the turnout gear is hung. And the the crews in the morning, a shift change, everybody's shuffling over there to put their gear away. While other guys that are coming on shift are having to get through there to grab their gear to get to the trucks. Again, another pinch point. You know, and I I I'm not posing all this as, you know, we we need to do something right away. We do actually have some ideas that that we're looking at and the sale of that engine would be one of those that is being put out there. This is our station two, different station, same story. The the picture on the left would be the the rear bay door facing to the the west down Second Avenue. You cannot walk between the bay door and the front of engine two that's parked there. The center picture, again, more sidestepping between the two vehicles and then around the front. I I know maybe before I got to wear the white shirts and put on a little bit of weight from sitting at a desk too much. I maybe could squeeze through there some days, but, you know, we we're all anxious for warm weather, so it's a little bit easier to get around there. Because the bay doors will be up. So that, again, it it's just there, the vehicles just keep getting bigger. To to try and at least make things a little bit better for us, though, we we've done quite a bit of station remodeling. Station two has seen probably the most of that so far. This is over on the the dorm side, on the north side of the building. These dorms, we went from having one large dorm room to creating these four individual dorms. With the door at the end of the hallway leading to a a small workout area that is set up. The picture on the right is what the inside of one of those dorm dorm rooms looks like. They they are cozy, to say the least, but they are functional at least. So this happened in twenty nineteen. We were approached by Lowe's here in Tiffin. They wanted to do a project to help reinvest in the community. And they they had come to the fire station asking, hey, do you do you know of anything good? And my question was, well, what about a a kitchen and station remodel? And they're like, for you guys? Yeah. And like, that sounds great, we're in. And so Lowe's ended up donating a ton of materials to us and selling other stuff at their cost. Our firefighters provided the labor and they provided everything else. And it was a a great opportunity to do quite a facelift. You can see the before and afters. This is our front workstation. The different angle from that, you can kind of see some of the difference there. In the kitchen and dayroom area, pictures were taken after we had started kind of putting new studs up. But you can kind of see what the the walls looked like previously and what the finished product is on the right. The old kitchen, again, I'm not positive that these were the original nineteen sixty six cupboards, but they they certainly could be close to that. Certainly a a dated looking kitchen and and nothing to look forward to coming to work to see each day. After Lowe's helped us out, though, the this was the result. And we had actually Waters Construction here locally in town. They came in and hung all the drywall for us and did a lot of the finishing work for it. Our guys set the cabinet, all the cabinets. And Lowe's had a flooring contractor that they worked with that came in and installed all the flooring for us. It was just a great partnership and it was something that until the the pandemic got started about a year ago, right when we've we're finishing up this work. I had always hoped to be able to do a big open house and invite all the members of city council and the administration. Out to the station to be able to see the work that we were able to do. In in part because of Lowe's, but also because of our our members putting the the elbow grease to it. So as we start to get back to normal, with the community partnerships have just been great. During this pandemic, we've had so many different organizations reach out to us and and asking, what can we do? What what can we do to help? Most recently, Reinicki Family Dealerships just dropped off over two thousand additional cloth masks for for our guys to wear. And, you know, not not even from us asking, they they just chose to do it. We we had numerous local businesses, Happy Days Nutrition, Subway. Nicole Miller was State Farm brought in lunch. I couldn't tell you how many times AJ's Pizza dropped off sheet pizzas to us. The this is truly a phenomenal community. And to me, that it should only push us to to work even harder to give back because they they've given so much to us. We look forward to getting back to a normal trick or treat again. The the downtown trick or treats were always so nice. We were able to participate in a trunk or treat event again out at the Willows. Where we used our smoke machine a lot with the 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 fire extinguisher trainer to make it look like the back of my truck was burning up. But it was a crowd pleaser, at least they they liked it. Some were worried, but we were okay. Just, we talked about the the summer parks programs and how those are going to be able to get going again this year. It looks like we were all set last year to actually launch a Tiffin firefighter academy program. Where three of our guys were gonna be working with some of the youth from the area. And putting them through an entire fire academy program, complete with physical training. To teaching them some of the different ins and outs of what goes into being a firefighter and an EMT. Getting them certified in CPR and first aid. A lot of thought had gone into it and and ended up getting scrubbed last year. But this year it looks like it's going to be a go and we're we're going to be even more prepared for it this year. We were able to promote two personnel this last winter. Andrew Bros, who had previously been a mechanic on our department, was promoted up to lieutenant. And then most recently, Nick Goshi, who you've probably seen, I think, half a dozen pictures of so far. Just became a mechanic for our department, taking Andrew's place there. Definitely two of our our best guys and we're happy to see them succeed in doing very well. So our goals and plans now for for twenty twenty one, we're going to continue pursuing grant opportunities. We've we've done a lot of this for a while, so we're we're getting pretty good at it. We've already applied for and received reimbursement of over one thousand dollars, a PPE through an Ohio Department of Public Safety program. And then other grants that we've already applied for, we just haven't heard back from yet, but we should be soon. The State Fire Marshal's Equipment Grant. Generally, the the only departments selected for this are very small, normally volunteer departments. But we still put in for about thirteen thousand dollars of air bottles and other miscellaneous equipment. Every year we apply for the ODPS EMS Equipment Grant that may yield around five thousand dollars. They they decide annually how much they want to give to us, that you don't request any amount with that. It's just a reimbursement program. The FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant, this is something we've received. The ladder truck from several years ago was part of this grant. Since vehicles is something that we would really not qualify for any longer. We did what they call a micro grant. And I've actually requested three different pieces of equipment from them under this grant. And we should know by the end of April how that works out. And the last one is the the FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, or more easily to say Safer Grant. This is a program that they they put out and our our department is requesting that three firefighter positions would be funded through it. The program has a performance period of thirty six months and it covers those costs at one hundred percent. So in essence, the city would have three firefighters on our department, but not on our payroll for three years. If approved, and that would reflect as a a total savings to the city of almost eight hundred sixty one thousand dollars. So just in the, not even through the entire first quarter of the year, we have almost a million dollars in grant requests out there. It it's certainly been keeping me busy and it's been kind of a fun experience, I'll admit, tiring but fun. So to kind of wrap up with our, the rest of our goals, we want to continue to integrate more technology into the department. We we've come a long ways the last five or six years and we're we're just looking to keep that going. There there's a lot of new staffing software and everything that more and more vendors are coming into that market with. And we're looking to to do things to continue to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible. We're going to continue investing more into modernizing our stations, perhaps with some of the money that looks to be coming from the latest stimulus package. We may be able to accomplish some really great things inside our stations. And while building a new station isn't on the radar at this point, certainly being able to modernize and make a a little bit more habitable. Our current ones would go a long ways. I intend to focus on the more officer development training. Certainly, the these last five and a half months, I I would not have enjoyed the success that I feel that that I have personally and that our department has. Had it not been for the level of involvement from the officers and individual members of the department as well. And I think by continuing to invest in their development, it's going to make the department an even better one long term. We're going to be doing so, some more hiring and working to retain personnel to return us to full staffing. That Safer Grant that I had talked about, we should know by the end of May. May twenty fourth is supposed to be the announcement date for the first round of awards. And if we are awarded that grant, then it's my intention to be able to start the hiring process immediately. And not wait for some of those applicants to possibly be picked up by another department. Going to be working on developing a strategic plan to continue and improve upon our current level of service. I I don't believe in resting on your laurels and saying, oh, we we do everything so good already, there's no need to try and advance this. We we're going to continue to push forward. And finally, and certainly very important to me is is continuing to build stronger relationships with local agencies and community stakeholders. You know, the today's fire department to to really be an outstanding department. Has to be integrated with the community it serves. The gone are the days of keeping the the firefighters inside with the doors closed and not letting the public see them. We need to be out in the public, we need to be seen and, you know, sharing our our prevention messages and, you know, just. Showing up at as many different events as we can get invited to, I think. It's just the community deserves to see what they what they're paying for. And I I'm certainly a strong advocate for that. So with that in mind, I I always end my training classes, whatever I'm doing, I always say questions, comments, concerns. And I'd certainly open up the floor if anybody has anything that they wish to ask. I apologize, it it took a while.
Well, Rob, thank you for your presentation. It's extremely thorough, accurate, really captured the essence of of your leaders. So I think you also stood the bar pretty, I think you terrified the department and have to give the expectations. So in fact, a few of them may have messaged in the middle of that.
Oh, great.
No, tremendous. You know, you and and every one of the different fire rescue division are just top notch individuals. Who who care about their jobs, who are are first class employees. So, you know, thank you to your service and everyone in that department, just for the continued leadership. And I know the community can't wait to see you all as well. I've heard that from many of the local groups, whether it's Boy Scouts or some of the ball leagues and others that they're just. They literally can't wait to either get in on the department or some of the events like, you know, we've had like touch a truck. they literally can't wait to either get in on the department or some of the events like, you know, we've had like touch a truck and other things. That really is the way to connect with the community and I know we're going to get there here in the next couple of months and get things back to normal. So thank you for your time this evening and I don't know if there are any, you might want to, Rob, stop sharing your screen so we can see all the council members in case any of them have questions or comments. There we go. Rich, are you calling on him or you want me to?
Yeah, Councilman Yon Tuno.
You're rich. Acting Chief, I just want to also give a shout out to you. It's been a pleasure, which was another casualty of COVID, of participation with the fire department on Safety Week every year. Your crew does an excellent job with our kids. We work with A through three on Tiffin City Schools and Calvert Catholic Schools, and so that's almost a thousand students. It's a shame we had that on this side this year also. Hopefully it's back this fall. I'm not sure yet. Guys just do a great job. We look forward to working with them every year. And it keeps them on base at one spot instead of having to travel all over the place, which kind of helps you too. And I think that classroom you were wondering about was crowded.
I think.
You had.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, you guys. We love working with you and we hope we're back this fall.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it as well.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to ask Chief Chapel if they rotate that new fire truck was purchased about one year ago this month. I was going to ask if you rotate that between Station One and Station Two, but from your pictures of the cramped space, I think answer my own question there. So if it doesn't, it's not being rotated.
No, that particular apparatus, it's a seventy-five foot quint and it's a combination of an engine with a ladder truck. That vehicle is actually too tall to even fit into our downtown station, so it's going to have a pretty permanent house at Station Two.
Well, that's good. That's in our second ward, so that's good.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Councilman Perry.
Just real quick, just I love the preventative programs that you guys are running, especially the ones for college kids. That's take it outside the box and I think that's really smart. Love. Chief came to my house a few years ago. They're working with a local pizza shop and if your fire alarms are working, they ordered you a pizza, which I thought was pretty awesome. So a couple of good points, good presentation, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, chief. Good job. Very thorough presentation. Very interesting.
Thank you. Appreciate it, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, Mayor, do you have anything else?
Do you want me to have anything else? No, I'll pass. I think I'm over my allotted time.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Steve got booted.
Huh?
I think Steve accidentally got booted.
Oh, I'm surprised he hasn't come in and told me. He's just in the other room. Look, you all continue and I will go. I'll go check on.
All right, we'll move on. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Just a couple of quick items. This week, the city administration, along with myself, we're meeting with the city's bond council to begin the work to renew the notes that are coming due in June. You may recall that there are one-year notes that you issued last June. They're over three million dollars for street improvements. So we'll need to, again, revisit the notes and more than likely, the decision will be to renew those for another year. And so we're starting the process and that will lead to a report to council, a recommendation and legislation for you to pass in order to accomplish that by the maturity date in June. So that's one item. The second item is the Charter Review Commission. They continue to meet to finish the review of the charter. The next meeting is a week from this Wednesday. That is March the twenty-fourth at six o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting. The business for that evening will be to review the recall section in Article Nine. They will also skip over Article Ten and finish up the Article Eleven and Twelve, which are the general provisions of the charter, dealing with subjects such as removal of elected officials and the qualifications of officials of city government. They skipped over ten because they believe that it might take one or more meetings in the month of April to review Article Ten, which deals with nominations and elections. You may recall that ten years ago, based on a recommendation from the Review Commission at that time and then council's decision to submit to the electors, there was a change in the charter to operate an open primary, no longer a partisan primary. And so this is the first time to review that and consider whether that's been successful. So I'm sure there will be some public comment regarding the nominating structure of electing local officials. So if you have any comments about that, you can plan to attend one or more of the April meetings and they will be announced at the next Charter Review Commission meeting. So I want to give you and the public an update regarding the commission's work. Are there any questions for me? That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Law Director. We're now under written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Mayor's Request for Legislation Twenty-One dash six to appropriate funds for one-time hazard paychecks to all City of Tiffin employees.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Twenty-One dash six will be forwarded to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
I also have a letter from the mayor announcing the new free swimming pool and Parks Department programs, which the mayor has already explained. And then I have one that was forwarded to council members this afternoon via email. It's a letter from Nick Dutrow and explaining the City of Tiffin Tax Incentive Review Council met and agreed unanimously to recommend that all of the agreements were recommended to be extended.
This letter from TIRC will be forwarded to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. Just going back for a second, does anybody have any comment about the Mayor's recommendation on the swimming pool? Any comment? Everybody, Councilman Gilligan?
Not just the swimming pool, but also the camps. I think it's a wonderful decision made by our city administration and it's going to really improve the summers of so many of our local youth and families.
Okay. I see everybody's heads nodding, so we're all in agreement. Okay. Moving on, we're under oral communications. Anyone from the attending public who wishes to address city council can do so by hitting the hand in the upper right-hand corner and the mayor will escort you in.
Yes, I know we still have several listening, so if anyone wishes to speak, this is your last chance for anyone from the public this evening. If you would like to speak, please click the button on your screen on the menu that says raise hand. And I have a hand up. It's Nick Dutrow from TSEP. And Nick is on his way in. And while Nick's on his way in, if there are any other members of the public wishing to speak, click the raise hand button and we'll bring you in after Mr. Dutrow.
All right, thank you. I just thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make myself available if there were any questions about the recommendations from the Tax and Senate Review Council. Also happy to answer any questions during the committee meeting upcoming.
Councilman Yon Tuno.
How soon do you need that meeting?
So based on what we've done in the past, we've had the all of the reports have already been submitted to the state provisionally stating that it was going to council, but with the recommendation from the Tax and Senate Review Council. So we can have that meeting at any time that works best for council and I'll make myself available whenever that is.
Law Director.
Just also to add some information, the revised code requires that the city respond to that recommendation within sixty days of its receipt. So there is a timeframe that you have to respond, depending on when you receive that recommendation, be the first of May.
Councilman Yon Tuno.
So if I set a meeting by end of this month so that we're ready to roll, that would be okay or is that too soon?
No, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for having me.
Well, thank you. I'd also like to go back to the Request for Legislation Twenty-One dash six that we just forwarded to the Personnel Labor Relations Committee. We need to make sure that you have a meeting before our next meeting so that we have a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Who else is in that committee with me?
On my list in front of me.
And Zach.
Yeah, I know Zach isn't.
Done.
Is there a day that works for you, fellas? I know Wednesdays usually work good for me.
Wednesday would be ideal, Councilman Perry.
Okay.
Available pretty well anytime after three.
Okay, just want to say four PM. Okay, I'd like to set a Personnel and Labor Relations meeting for be March seventeenth at four PM to discuss Legislation Twenty-One dash six and any other business that comes through the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now, do we have any motions? First, well, I should have, is there anybody else, Mayor, that?
No, sir. No other.
All right, thank you. Are there any motions? We're now under resolutions.
Resolution number Twenty-One dash seven introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution confirming the appropriation, authorizing the payment of one hundred forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars, requesting that the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, proceed and authorizing the contract with ODOT for all, all for the street res servicing project known as PID number nine, five, seven, seven, eight, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution Twenty-One dash seven.
Ordinance number Twenty-One.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Who signed that? Councilman Leopard?
I signed that. Do you want a suspension on that?
We won't suspend it.
Mr. President, I would ask for suspension of the three reading rule and Resolution Number Twenty-One dash seven in immediate passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the suspension of council's three-reading rule in immediate passage of Resolution Twenty-One dash seven. Is there a second, please? Councilwoman Boyle.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we talked in the committee, the whole meeting, but I was hoping for the community's benefit. Could someone touch once again on the deadline of the first week in April, or maybe I already stated that and that's the reason we're suspending it. First week in April deadline.
Mayor, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, the deadline to have the paperwork into ODOT is the first week of April.
Is there any other comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, I asked the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Yanatuno, yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
And Gilligan?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Yanatuno, yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
And Gilligan?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Yanatuno, yes. Jones?
Yes, wrong button.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
And Gilligan?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-One dash seven passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, ordinance number Twenty-One dash twenty introduced by Kenneth Jones. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in two thousand twenty-one for the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading, ordinance Twenty-One dash twenty.
That concludes the ordinance, Mr. President.
Thank you. That is the end of our agenda. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Councilwoman Yon Tuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to try to set up a meeting of Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee. I know I'm going to mess up what it's for. It did not print it off my computer this afternoon. But my members are Bridgette and Steve, and so looking at last week in March, what works best for you, like with the twenty-ninth work for both of you?
Yeah, I'm good.
You'll need Nick, too.
Bridgette, how about you?
Um, perhaps what time were you thinking, John?
What works for you guys? Doesn't matter to me.
Um, I could do four later if that is okay with everyone else.
Four pushing you too much?
No, it's okay. I can rearrange, but I can't rearrange before that, so.
You're fine. Nick and Steve, does that work for both of you? Four o'clock on the twenty-ninth?
I'd prefer ten AM, but four is fine.
Sorry.
I'm fine to push, to push later at four thirty, but four o'clock would be just fine for me.
Thirty's fine. Steve, you okay at four thirty?
Good.
Sorry we're not pushing Bridgette too much either. Okay, I know I'm going to mess this up. So I would like to announce the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee will be meeting four thirty on March twenty-ninth via Zoom to go over the TIRC request from TSEP. That correct way to say that.
Close enough, yeah.
Okay.
And anything else, right?
Anything else that may come before the committee?
Okay. All right, anyone else? Anything else for the good of the order? Going once, going twice. God bless all of you. Have a great night and a good rest of your week. Good night.